All right, we're on, I think. This is -- I don't have my agenda. Would you mind being yours?[15.48][15.48](laughter) This is the 25th meeting of the Milton Planning Board for fiscal year 2014. And I'm Alex White side. The chairman and the people at the table will introduce themselves if they like. If they don't like, that's all right. Starting with you.
Edward Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Brian Furze, member.
Emily Ennis, member.
Excellent. Now, we have some minutes. Bill, the two sets of minutes with the revised -- the revisions look good to me.
I didn't have a chance to see them. They came while I was at work.
All right, well, we'll do them next week. We'll do the minutes next week. And you say next week? I thought it was two weeks from now. But the Master Plan Committee has seen fit to reschedule the Housing Forum next Thursday?
It's next Thursday. It was supposed to have been Monday, but we didn't want to compete with the East Milton Parking Study presentation.
Next Thursday at what time?
At 7:00.
That's next Tuesday, Emily?
Yep.
At?
Probably here.
In the Carol Blute Conference Room.
In the Carol Blute Conference Room. And this is our housing workshop to which the Planning Board has been invited.
And the Planning Board, we think that it would be well to schedule a meeting because one of our -- well, one of the things we're going to do tonight is discuss condominiums. And I think that discussion will be continuing into the Housing Forum next week. So why not simply schedule our 26th meeting of the fiscal year next Thursday at 7:00 here? Yes?
Next Thursday is East Milton.
What?
No, that's next Monday is the East Milton Parking on the 19th. So we're moving to the 22nd because we didn't want to conflict with that.
All right, well, we should post it anyhow because we will be having a forum there.
We'll post it and I'll confirm location and time.
Okay. Now, Bill, we postponed the minutes.
Yeah.
Unless -- Emily said she hadn't had time to read them.
It's in the -- I'm at work.
Is it Thursday? Did you read that on your computer?
It's -- no, the East Milton's on the 19th. Master Plan and Plan of the Week on the 22nd.
I read them. Is there anything in Pauling yesterday?
Sorry? No, this is next.
This is just that we can never run anything over.
We have a master plan on our daily, just master plan.
All right. Bill says -- well, shouldn't we do the 9th before the 23rd? Or Bill says, why can't we do?
We have the 23rd in the pack.
So the 23rd haven't been changed?
No changes.
In that case, I'll move the minutes to the 23rd.
All right, okay. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. The 23rd is approved. And if you like, we could do the 9th.
Almost done. Fine. I'll move the minutes to the 9th.
Okay, you're moving approval of the 9th.
Yep.
We've got a second. Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the minutes are approved. Now we go into that long-anticipated reorganization of the Planning Board. And we'll entertain nominations for the chairmanship. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Alex Whiteside as chairman.
I second the nomination.
Well, I'd be happy to do it if I can round up the votes.[273.72][273.72](laughter)
Sounds like you've got two already.
Any other nominations? Okay. Why don't we vote on that nomination? All in favor? Aye. Okay, so Alex Whiteside is elected chairman. And now we're going to take nominations for secretary. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Ed Duffy for secretary.
All right.
If he'll accept.
I second that.
Oh, sir.
All right. Any other nominations for secretary? All right, all in favor? Aye. So we've reorganized the board. Now we get into citizen speak. And citizen speak gives citizens who feel that they have something important or relevant to say to the Planning Board a chance to say it. So who wants to -- what citizens, among those many citizens out there, would like to speak? All right, no citizens want to speak. So we've concluded our citizen speak portion. This is moving along well.
Picking along nicely.
It's sort of like the town meeting was moving along until it hit the cluster bylaw.[360.93][360.93](laughter)
I think it may have slowed down a little bit before that, yeah. But the first five articles were great.[368.49][368.49](laughter)
All right. Now, I think we're going to do the typical cross-section. Now, as everyone knows, we are supposed to have a typical cross-section in our rules and regulations. And the last one that I have located is in this blue booklet which costs $2.
In what year?
January 25, '79. It shows an exhibit state with a 32-foot pavement. And we're thinking that -- and that's the maximum.
Right.
And then we can reduce it down. We're thinking maybe we are -- cross-section attached to our rules and regs should be 28 feet, and then we could still work it down. But that gives us -- that gets rid of four unnecessary feet and gives us plenty of width for any possibility.
You want to change the 12-foot dimension on here to 14 feet?
It will be changed. It will be changed, yeah. We're going to have to have a different cross-section showing a -- yeah.
If we're changing the cross-section, I'm wondering if we should include -- I've noticed that trees aren't -- street trees aren't always installed well. I'm wondering if we should actually include the tree pit onto the cross-section. We just have this tree sort of stuck level with the ground and nothing showing the fact that they're going to have to accommodate a root system if they put one in.
You've got to take that four feet from somewhere.
No, I know that, but if you're going to show a street tree, you need to actually -- let me get in the right place. You actually need to -- should diagram in the tree pit for it.
How deep do you want?
Six?
Like somebody at the nursery.
I have no problem with that, except where am I getting the other two feet? I mean, right now, the plan shows 12 on each lane.
Yeah.
We're going to switch that to 14.
I know.
Give me two extra feet.
But you still need to have the -- I mean, we require street trees sometimes, so we have to figure out how we're going to do that.
The grass strip right now is what? Eight and a half feet?
We use the -- I've been up on a -- we use the street tree easement on adjoining property for trees often. Isn't that shown on there, the street tree?
Yeah, this is what I'm -- this is actually what I'm talking about. See, tree easement, right here, so that's what the tree's in there. But I'm just saying that we need to diagram that.
I mean, I think that's enough. I mean, this is a --
Yeah, but Bill's saying he needs to take the two feet from either side of here, which should give us a tree easement of three -- that doesn't make sense.
Right now, it's eight and a half feet.
Tree easement's five feet. Bill was just talking about taking the --
This is a 50-foot right-of-way.
Right.
And there's 13 feet on each side of the pavement.
Then it shouldn't affect?
So there's nine feet. And you know, the -- there's only going to be one sidewalk.
So then you're taking the feet from either side, shouldn't affect the tree easement of five feet?
So you want to take it from the tree lawn?
I'm talking about depth, the tree pit.
I can go six. I have no problem with that. I'm just trying to figure out where I'm getting the other two feet within the 50.
To make the 24, 28?
Right. No, I understand that.
But the tree lawn right now is eight and a half feet.
I'm looking at the tree easement to five.
No, no, I'm saying --
Yeah, I know. But I wasn't talking about taking from the width. That was Bill. What I'm saying is when you diagram the tree pit, you need to go down.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not changing the width. That's you changing the width.
Look, if we can have -- if we're agreed on a 28-foot pavement, we can work out the -- John Thompson can work out the specifics to make sure we get trees. I mean, these utilities are not going to -- it isn't going to be a big block of concrete they're in. They can be sort of away from the trees. What are you doing? You were writing something?
Trying to get support for my 26 feet, not my 28, but you want 28 and go for 20.
All right.
What's your standard bike lane? I'm trying to figure out what's comprising the 28 feet. What's your standard bike lane? Two feet? One feet? 18 inches?
Standard bike lane, three.
Three feet?
Maybe four.
It's three in Cambridge.
Three feet.
So 28 feet would allow for that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Maybe we should put a bike lane into the standard profile.
Yeah.
Bill? John Thompson?
Yeah, I would agree.
The low-key guy today. He won't be low-key tomorrow.
Yeah.
He won't be low-key tomorrow, right?
All right.
Okay, so are we agreeable to those?
Yes, we're going to add a bike lane, we're going to add a tree pit, and we're going to let John figure out the engineering.
Right, you can push those utilities over to the -- away from the trees.
Okay.
The tree easement is not part of the layout. The tree easement --
Right.
Okay.
That's why I couldn't understand why Bill was saying he was going to have to take feet from the tree easement. It's because I'm talking about something different.
The tree easement is 50 feet. We can't go beyond that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we could go beyond it, but that wouldn't be good.
Okay, so.
All right, so I think that -- and we're agreeable to -- agreeable to getting something of -- to adding a Section 14 to the rules and regulations. It should be in the zoning, yeah. It should be in the zoning, but it will be in the zoning, but not till next October, right?
The FEMA.
Oh, you jumped ahead of me. Okay. Yes. We'll put it in in October. We'll put it back into the --
We're going to put it into -- at the end of the rules and regulations because we want the people to be protected. And we can't have a special town meeting without stepping on some toes.
Do you need a motion to add it to the rules and regs?
Yes.
Well, we're going to -- it seems to me that we want -- okay, I want a motion, but I want to -- I want it to be that Mr. Clark and I have to confer to get -- make sure that we're all on the same page.[813.62][813.62](laughter)
As far as all this reads, no, I'm confused.
I just, you know, I want to -- I want these -- this ad that we're sending out, I want to input into it.
So then can we move to delegate this matter to the two of you to ensure that it gets put into our rules and regs?
Yes.
All right.
We're going to delegate, and we're going to put the ad in.
What ad?[841.12][841.12](laughter)
You're going -- aren't you going to advertise the change to our rules and regs?
No.
No? We're just going to do it?
That's what -- rules and regs can't do that.
All right, well, you and I are going to confer about this. If we can do it without advertising, we will, but I can see Ned shaking his head and saying, "This doesn't seem right."[870.00][870.00](laughter)
Just getting a kick out of things.
I'm nice.[876.32][876.32](laughter)
All right, we will make sure that when we're ready to adopt -- we're not adopting them tonight.
I withdraw my motions, both of them.
We're going to -- we're going to have to -- we're going to have to make sure the procedure is down correctly, and we're going to do this next Thursday, a week from today, Bill.
We're meeting on the --
We're meeting on the 22nd.
You weren't here.
We're having a joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Master Plan Committee next Thursday at 7:00.
Which is?
Probably down here. I can't remember where it posted.
Here, in the Carol Blute Conference Room.
It's here. I actually have this room for Master Plan, so we can have a joint meeting here.
Excellent. So you just have to post it then as well, we're good.
The next meeting will be 5:22 here.
The more the merrier.
Can I ask where the --
Seven.
Can you ask what?
Seven. At seven, that's where the planning -- that's where the Master Plan always meets, at seven.
Who's the East Milton meeting next Monday?
Where is it?
Council on Age.
I spoke.
What time?
7:00.
I did something on conference.
Okay. All right. Do we want to -- we can put off -- shall we sign the plan now or wait till after? We'll do that at the end.
What are we doing at the end?
There's a Mylar signing.
Okay. As long as nobody's waiting for it, right?
And the update with the consultant team members of the Master Plan?
They're here.
I'm sure that they're going to -- are they going to participate in our discussion of condominiums?
They are going to listen and participate.
All right, so why don't we let them update us at that time?
All right.
Once they start their participation, unless you've got something to participate in before we start a discussion.
So there's about a five-minute Master Plan update, which you can do before or after the condo discussion, however you prefer.
Uh.
Maybe 10 minutes.
Okay, why don't we have the update, the Master Plan update? And they can talk about the meeting next Thursday and how it's going to -- how it's going to hold into the scheme of things.
That's all that's worth, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So since the last --
You're being televised and recorded. Everyone is.
Daphne Politis, Community Circle.
Brian Barber from Community Circle.
And we are members of the consultant team. I'm the lead consultant on the Master Plan. And since last we met, just wanted to update you on our activities and the issues that we are in the midst of identifying. So as we said last time, the Master Plan is three components, basically determining what it is that people want in terms of goals and vision, what it is that you have in terms of existing conditions, and assessing those and identifying opportunities and challenges. And then coming up with strategies, that is, ways of getting from where you are to where you want to be. And that's the implementation plan. So we have conducted numerous stakeholder interviews, and we had a March 1st townwide public forum. We held our first roundtable in a series of three on what we called Healthy Milton. And that is about health and wellness, both on an individual basis as well as a townwide basis. And just to give you some highlights on things that were discussed there, things that came up as priorities in that discussion included improving connections, both physical in terms of enhanced pedestrian and bicycle access, as well as communication primarily between the town and residents. Maximizing the use of existing buildings for more community usage before thinking about constructing new ones. Although there was a lot of discussion about the need for more community gathering opportunities, both built and unbuilt. Creating a town calendar and enhancing the civic center. And that's not a building, that's a zone in the town, and we're in the midst of it. So the Town Hall, the Library, the Police Department, the Council on Aging, the gazebo, all comprising the civic center, but that's currently really fragmented. And how does one make that more of a place? More connected, more vibrant? And there were many discussions about how to use that. One of the most interesting was thinking about maybe having a pop-up plaza, that is, a temporary plaza with temporary seating, maybe food trucks, coffee carts, to get this to be more of a place. And as a way of testing out whether maybe in the future you'd like to do a little bit of commercial in this area. So those are just some of the highlights from the Healthy Milton. Then we moved on to the second of our series of three, which we called Vibrant Commercial Districts. And there we talked a lot about your existing business districts, as well as economic development overall, as a way of doing two things, increasing the tax base, as well as providing what people have been asking for. Many people have been asking for more opportunities for dining, more opportunities for retail, more opportunities again for community gathering and spontaneous, as well as planned meetings and interactions. So at the -- at this roundtable, some of the highlights were thinking about creating mixed overlay districts in order to encourage a different mix and more activity. Transition zones, going from commercial to residential. Improving connections, bicycle, walking, as well as transit. And parking was a major theme, both coming up with strategies on how to maximize and manage existing parking, as well as creating new parking. Streamlining permitting was a big issue and key. And also thinking about other strategies, like a business improvement district, a bicycle-friendly district, beautification, and sense of place, and strategies, and shared public-private partnerships, and how to achieve all those. So those are, again, just some highlights, because I know we have a lot of other things to talk about. Our third, and perhaps most popular, roundtable is next Thursday, as you've said, and it's on housing and neighborhoods. Sorry, the workshops next Thursday. The roundtable is on June 11th. Thank you, Emily. And the workshop is our midpoint, is our preparation for that roundtable. And we have outlined a few topics for discussion there. Amongst them will be the condo conversion that you'll be talking about tonight. Inclusionary zoning, 40B, greatest states, that is, large homes with large properties, and how to use, preserve, and reuse them. Aging in place, and the variety of issues that that implies, including downsizing to smaller housing units, senior housing dedicated for 55 and over, assisted living, and two more, accessory units, and residential above retail. So those are all topics to be discussed and considered. And we're moving towards the Housing Roundtable on June 11th, where we will try to identify policy directions that might be more geographically based, so looking at the neighborhoods and how each one may require a different policy or a different combination of policies. So that's a brief overview of where we've been and a little bit about where we're going.
Good. Questions? Questions? All right, well, why don't we launch into our topic of the evening, which is a public discussion of possible new zoning for condominiums in Milton, and the benefits and disadvantages of the various possibilities. Now, if we look at our current zoning bylaw, we have a number of provisions regarding condos, one of which is in 6K, which provides for attached cluster development. And that is basically Quissett Brook. The development has to be in a residence E district. It has to be on a parcel of land of at least 25 acres. And the number of dwelling units to be constructed may not exceed one unit for each 25,000 square feet of qualifying land area. And it goes on to say, and the average number of bedrooms per dwelling unit may not be greater than two and a half bedrooms per dwelling unit. That's an average. So there's only one E zone in Milton, and Quissett Brook is on it. And I believe that they have developed it to the full extent of the zoning. Then we have the condominium conversion special permit, which the attached cluster development is Section 6K. We've got 6L, which is the condominium conversion special permit, which is, Bill, is this the Sears estate? Or the Sears estate is in Boston, whatever estate that is that they developed into condos?
The Borough State, yes, L.
This is it?
Yeah.
L. So it has to do with large estate buildings.
Is that the only one, the Borough State, that's been developed under this? Or do we have more developed under this one? Do we know?
What is the --
I think that's the only one I can think of.
Hollingsworth, the Brushwood. What is that under? That's another condo.
I thought that was -- that's on the middle.
In any event, it, once again, it applies to existing estate buildings. And you may recall Mr. Mullin, Mr. James Mullin, saying that some of the buildings that were converted into units were chicken cooks. But half the existing buildings, so it's not particularly -- the Brushwood zoning is not particularly useful. The Borough State is -- requires a big estate building. And so that's what we've got. We've got a number of developers who have expressed interest in doing condominiums. And some of the -- I mean, for instance, the St. Pius Rectory site, there is a developer who wants to develop 30 or so units there. And it's eight acres. It's in the middle of a residential zone. It's nothing particularly special about it that says condominiums. But there is an owner who doesn't want to do single-family development and would like to do condominiums. And whenever that happens, you obviously have to think that there's always a possibility if you say, "No, we don't want you to do condominiums," to have the developer say, "Well, we'll have to do them under 40B." No direct threats, but it's always a possibility. So to say, "No condos in Milton if you want to. Do condos, do it under 40B," is one approach. But what we have suggested to the town is that we will give this matter some thoughtful attention and come up with some zoning to allow condominiums in Milton with adequate standards, so that if condominiums get developed under the new zoning, they will be something that the people in the town think is appropriate. Now, one thing that I looked at, just as far as procedure is concerned, is the Dover, the Dover zoning. They have an interesting approach. They have multifamily residence district. And it's pretty -- it's not very wide open. In fact, it's incredibly restricted. They say at least 20. They say at least 25% of the units constructed in a multifamily residence district shall be affordable. And at least 40% of the units shall also be elderly. So that's not a provision that would entice a lot of developers into Dover, just because affordable units are not profitable to a developer. They need, the way it works is that market reg units basically subsidize the construction of, in a condo sense, the sale of the condominiums, the market condominiums subsidize the sale of the affordable condominiums, so that there's a net, still a net profit to the developer, but less than it would be if there were no affordable units. Okay, in Dover, they say, no multifamily development shall be built within a half-mile of any other such development. So first come, first served. In Dover, they say the total number of dwelling units in a multifamily development shall be limited to the lesser of four times the difference between the total number of acres in the tract, less the number of acres of wetlands. So that just basically means that every acre of buildable land, you can put four units on. That's their density. They do have an upper limit of 40. So that's, that's the entry in Dover. But while you do, and there are a number of design characteristics here, what happens before a developer can do, go to the planning board for a special permit, they have to submit a preliminary development plan to the planning board and other agencies, to the town meeting. And then the town meeting will decide whether or not the particular, the particular application, even, and it has to meet all the specifications in the Dover, in the zoning to begin with. And if it does, you get to go to the town meeting and convince the town meeting that what you've got is good, and it meets the requirements, and it's no more than, it's more than half-mile from any other development, and it should be approved. And the town meeting would then zone a district for this particular use. And I think that, you know, when you're, with that big affordable component, your spot zoning situation is probably not a problem. Probably not a problem. So go to town meeting. If they give you your two-thirds vote and rezone the property, you then get to go to the planning board and get a special permit. And there will be more, more than the original. You don't need a full, a full application to go to the town meeting. You need enough to show what you're going to do, meeting the requirements in the zoning. And the planning board, if four members, or however many are required in Dover, vote for it, the developer is off to the races. And?
If they're requiring 25% affordable.
And 40% elderly.
40% elderly, and numerous other requirements. Why would a person, a developer, go with that and not just go to 40B?
Right. And why?
Well, I think I said that this was not a significant, that developers were probably not flocking to Dover. But it is, 40B is, 40B is sometimes uncertain.
Has it been used? Do you know if it's actually?
I have made a few calls, but I haven't, I haven't, I haven't. In any event, this is an interesting procedure. I certainly don't think that, I think the idea of having standards for condos, a condo development, you can do a condo development if you meet certain standards, have the town meeting somehow approve that, maybe not rezoning it, but just giving it a, maybe an up or down approval, and then let the planning board, let the planning board do the special permit, under, you know, design guidelines. What we would need, of course, is to determine what sort of developments we're, we think can go to the, to the town meeting. Is it open season? Anyone who has a development should be able to go. That's basically sort of what we do now, is that a developer comes up with a plan, and if it seems to be reasonable, specific zoning is adopted for that particular plan. This is an effort, the effort we're trying to make is to adopt zoning, which will permit different condominium developments, without having to zone every one of them.
In Dover, is, prior to going to town meeting, does the planning board do a technical review to make sure that the application does, in fact, meet the zoning?
I would, I mean, it does or it doesn't, but it obviously should.
Okay.
I mean, the Dover, I just, it seems to me that zoning, zoning a particular parcel may be overkill. But the idea of town meeting buy-in is, is an interesting one. So I don't think Dover is, I don't think Dover is there, as far as the model for the state.
Right.
But it does, you know, the idea of getting the town meeting involved seems to be reasonable.
Do you think there's that many areas in Milton where condominiums would be developed, that you couldn't address it one by one?
Well, you know we could, if we, the planning board, I mean, take St. Pius, that's eight acres, and they want to, say, 30 units. If we, the planning board, say, yes, this is fine, we'll do some zoning, and this is how it should be, and on this particular site. In other words, we'll sort of do some site planning with the developer, and come up with an acceptable development, and then go to town meeting and say, we support this development, and hope you'll give us a two-thirds vote, and it will be couched in language that makes it not spot zoning, but it probably.
So you already shouldn't see a town meeting, give a two-thirds approval of any.
Well, no, I think that a majority vote from town meeting should be the threshold, I personally, yeah. I don't see any reason why the, if the zoning, you know, if the zoning that we prepare passes, saying, you've got to, you've got to go to town meeting and get a majority approval, that that should be enough, because the zoning would have been adopted by a two-thirds majority of town meeting.
Is 6L, you're saying this is too specific and restrictive to address?
It only, it only applies to E districts. And, you know, we could make it, we could make it applicable to the whole town, but it would still require a 25-acre parcel.
So the idea is to look at smaller parcels and then other?
Well, the idea is that it might be sort of like the Dover. It might not, there might not be a lot of developers rushing to, rushing to make use of this. I mean, there was, as you recall, on the warrant, there is an Article 38, attached condominium residence development, which suggested that you might put, I think, 11 units on 35,000 square feet, which is somewhat less than an acre. So developers have different, different, different points of view. And the, we should have points of view also, and our points of view should be reasonable and objective and well-thought-out. And eventually, we should get a consensus as to what the standards for condominium development should be. And hopefully, we could, we could do it, get enough standards, so that we could cover the possibilities.
That's what I would hope. I think, one thing that concerns me about the developer's point of view, is I think a developer having to go to town meeting with a specific project, to get that project specifically zoned for a specific site, and then have to go to planning board to get a special permit, that's an awful lot of uncertainty and an awful lot of time to tie a property up. And I would be very concerned that that just directs them towards 40B, because that's a more certain projects, process, certainly than a town meeting vote, in my opinion.
But what we have to, we have to understand, I mean, certainty for developers is useful, but the town meeting has to be convinced that what we're proposing is good for the town. And it should, you know, when we take a site and apply what we've formulated to it, it should come up with a good result.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns that we were having in talking about this earlier this year was the fact that the parcels that people were coming to us with were wildly different in their characteristics, and what can be built on them, and how those things could be built. And whatever we do to allow condominiums, have to have design guidelines and standards that are going to be flexible enough to cover a number of properties. Because I don't think we want to end up in our zoning condominium right here, for, under these characteristics, and a condominium over here, under these characteristics, and a different chapter in our zoning for, or a different section in our zoning for each one of those. It's going to be a nightmare for us, it's going to be a nightmare for the developer, and it's going to be a nightmare for town meeting, having to wade through all these articles. So how can we create something that's flexible enough to address all of these, provides reasonable assurance to the town that they know what they're going to get, and reasonable assurance to the developers that they're going to have a streamlined, a relatively streamlined process, where if they go through it, follow all the steps, provide all the information, they've got a reasonable certainty of being able to build a project?
Yeah, we saw this play out a little bit with there in the town meeting, where we need to craft, there was a little bit different, because it was going in reverse to protect existing businesses. But we need to craft, you would have to craft a bylaw that would be flexible enough to adapt to the different, specific sites, but allow the planning board enough discretion to apply the proper protections for butters in the special permit.
Yeah.
And hopefully, have the zoning be through the public process here, as opposed to the town meeting process.
How maybe it can work? I mean, the idea of having the majority vote, as opposed to two-thirds, you know, you've already voted the zoning in at two-thirds, it was a good point, then you can have a majority vote. If, if the planning board has already done a technical review before going to town meeting, and says, look, they meet all the requirements of the zoning, it's a matter of hammering out the detail, what do you think of that? It's possible that could work? But it also, you know, as you go forward, you have to look at town meetings, and how they go through the process, and some town meetings go more smoothly than other town meetings. So I'm not, I like the idea of doing a single bylaw that covers all of this.
May I have a question?
Yeah.
So I understand the proposal to look at this bylaw as a way of coming up with a process that makes a more systematic approach to, and is more transparent, and it's fair, and it makes it easier for developers to understand what it is. But what is the, is the purpose to discourage condominium development, encourage it? Is it a purpose to also provide more affordable housing? Is the purpose to encourage senior housing? Because there are, all those components can be found in that Dover bylaw. So what is, what is the main purpose that you're looking for?
It sounds like it's control.
So, but control of the development, with the end result being, what is it that you'd like the outcome to be?
Control of the design?
Well, there would be control of the design, there would be control of the density, there would be a, I know that some people say that, that they like this idea in Dover of having no more than 2.5 average bedrooms, because it would discourage more schoolchildren.
Which is the impact on the schools.
But before we start discouraging schoolchildren, I think we need to know why we're doing it. I mean, some people say the schools are.
At capacity.
Are pretty full, and don't have a lot more room, but.
Not to mention the budget. Not to mention the school budget.
Not to mention the budget, but of course, we would want to know what the, what the impacts would be. In other words, some people say that condominium development is cheaper. It's, you save money, you get more taxes, you put out less services, and it's a net plus to a town than single-family houses.
If you don't have three or four bedrooms in school age children.
Well, and, of course, if all your condominiums are two-bedroom, it used to be, I mean, for instance, in Quincy, used to be, a lot of young people used to get apartments in Quincy, and then when they had families, they'd move to Milton, take advantage of the schools and a bigger house. And this would sort of make, make a ton of two-bedroom apartment condominium developments to supposedly help the tax base, but whether or not I would do that is something that we want to know.
Plus, if you're trying to attract young people, right now, there's a trend, nobody's quite sure if it's an actual shift, but younger people tend to not be buying cars at this point, and they may want a two-bedroom apartment or condominium, but they're going to want it on transportation.
Right.
So as we look at where some of these sites are, those may not be suitable for that particular market, because they're too far away from public transit.
How did 88 Worf get built?
It was a specific zoning.
Yeah.
Over many years.
Many, many years. They finished it, what, the year before I came?
But I mean, how would you capture a building like that in zoning? If you're talking about St. Pius, you wouldn't want to.
They zoned it. I mean, we zoned that building.
But you wouldn't want a 10-story building in St. Pius, would you?
Well.
Well, that's why the design guidelines have, I mean, one of the things you could do is you could have either a guideline, which is a little bit looser, or a standard, which is a requirement, saying, pretty much the way the Chapter 40B law says, although we make it a little stricter, that what went in had to be consistent with the housing stock that was around it. So you could, for example, in a place that's single-family homes only, the condos would have to look like single-family homes.
So you'd accomplish that, you wouldn't say two-stores, limit earning, you'd accomplish it by saying it has to fit into the?
Depends on how strict you want to be. You could say that there is a limit of a certain number of stories, or a certain height, a roof pitch at a certain level, or you could just simply say that it has to fit into the neighborhood.
It'd be nice to see some condos built over even possibly existing commercial space.
And that goes to what Daphne was saying earlier, about the idea of residential over retail.
Which is, isn't like what you would do at St. Pius, which isn't like 88 Worf. It just, it seems to me this.
Yeah.
Those might be, those might be separate zoning districts. You know, you may have an overlay district at some point in Milton Village, you might have a separate zoning district overlay in East Milton Square, to allow some of those things in the future, but.
Yeah. The difference, of course, is if you do residential over retail in any of the current business districts, you have to address parking. districts, you have to address parking.
Mm-hmm.
If you're looking at a site where you're going to build new residential over retail, then you have parking requirements, but you're not dealing with existing parking restrictions. That's actually one of the things that we're talking about and will discuss next week about having at the Housing Forum on June eleventh, is talking about commercial in, existing commercial and potential new commercial in neighborhoods. What do you do about that, and what do people think?
I understand what you're saying about time, Brian, but it, it seems like it'd be hard to, I mean, Dover, obviously, in my mind, didn't accomplish it, it'd be hard to craft a condominium bylaw that would, you know, be more attractive.
Go ahead.
We're going to go forty B and ignore all your crazy restrictions.
That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do something that will be attractive to developers. Now, one thing you have to, you should, you should know that people in Milton don't trust the planning board to do the right thing. They, you know
He was laughing.
They don't trust, they don't trust change.
To say, no, to say, just leave it to us, we'll take care of it. They don't, that doesn't, it doesn't cut it.
But that's not unusual.
What?
That's not unusual.
It's not unusual, but the reason to, the, the idea, you can't just say, don't worry about the details, the planning board will work it all out and it'll be just great, and you'll be getting plenty of protections because they know about protections, and we don't have to specify anything in the zoning because the planning board has all that stuff in their manual, just waiting to go and put into their special permit.
But I do think that your point, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Mike.
Mike's point about why would this be chosen by a developer? In fact, the town of Acton had, for many years, I'm looking here for my, in my notes for the, they had a sub-district B for the creation of multifamily units that had forty percent affordable, and then they had one that was ten percent affordable, and they even gave a twenty-five percent density bonus, and it wasn't used. So you have to find the right
It wasn't what?
It was not used.
Right.
Developers didn't
What was the, they had, well, of course, the forty percent affordable would definitely not be used.
Right, and, yeah, exactly. That one was never even discussed.
Ten percent as opposed to twenty-five percent is significant.
It is significant. And then there's the, but they also provided a density bonus, and I'm not hearing anything about a density bonus here.
Well, we haven't gotten there yet.
Right.
I mean, we haven't discussed density. I mean, the density of condominiums, if we, if we say that in a residence double-A area, you can have one per eighty thousand square feet, we're not going to get many applicants.
Right.
So we have to figure out what the density is.
Right.
And this is why we've invited people to give us their thoughts.
Should we, should we
I think that we should.
Open up and let people come in?
I think we should.
If you guys want to sit back and
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be nice to get a, a, you know, bigger example, a bigger set of examples, like you were just reading, Acton, Dover, it'd be nice to get a
I agree.
Yeah.
You agree with that.
And try to conglomerate some of the good ideas that
I have, I absolutely, there are undoubtedly some great ideas, the house is just waiting to
Best form of flattery is imitation.
Exactly.
We expect you to bring them with you next time.
Bylaws, right. A dozen times.
I'll see what I can come up with.
All right. Ned, Mr. Carquardt, you're going to help us out here?
See what I can do.
Okay.
Thank you for inviting me.
You've, you've heard what we're, what we're struggling with, and we hope that you can give us some assistance.
Well, I am happy to. I'm here, and I'm here specifically, two, two things. One, I've had, I'm aware of some properties in play. I've got two clients with properties in play, wildly different properties. One that was before the board and went to Board of Appeals for a variance that was unfortunately denied, but the, the Knights of Columbus property may still be in play if there's some way to gain access to the property next door, to be reconsidered. And that would be a very small parcel, and in a very dense area, where you might consider six to eight units, depending on how it's fully allocated with one or more affordables. So that's one type of property that probably needs to be thought about. And not a lot of others like that in town, but I think there are probably some. It abuts, it's surrounded by multifamily, including next door to a four condo, somehow a building that was converted to four condominium units with, with six mailboxes. You understand that two of the condos were subdivided, so there's six mailboxes. So that's one extreme. I'm also here on behalf of Northland Residential Development, and Jack Dolly, Jack is with me here. Jack, tomorrow takes title to the St. Pius the Tenth Rectory Site. He's had it under agreement for close to a year, and tomorrow, he takes title without conditions. So he's not conditioned on his ability to gain approval, but his desire is to develop a reasonably, what we think is a reasonably scaled condominium development that would be age-targeted by design, not necessarily age-targeted by restriction. And by age-targeted design, Jack can show you some things, but basically, a very successful example of what he's done is the McLean Hospital Site in Belmont, where he did approximately a hundred and twenty units on a fairly significant parcel, piece of property. And the age-targeted by design is really a cluster of, small clusters of townhomes where the first-floor master bedroom is on the ground floor. So you have garage, first-floor master, other living space, one or two bedrooms on the second floor with additional half-bath, or additional bath. And out of a hundred and twenty-some units in that development, which is fully sold out, there are three children identified, at least by the Clerk's Office and the Town Census. So it's really the type of facility that lends itself towards that in-between generation that's downsizing, staying in Milton, may want to, may have some, a winter home in Florida or a house on the Cape, and is not there full-time, but is there substantially part-time, and wants to remain in Milton. And so that's the, the notion. The, the property is, as Alex said, is eight and a half acres. It's got nice frontage on Brush Hill Road, including a historic stone wall with an opening in the, roughly in the middle. There is a, the old Pius, St. Pius Rectory Building on the property, it is on the Massachusetts Historic Register. So it's, saving that is probably reasonably significant, and maybe converting that is part of a broader development. And so we have launched into a series of meetings with next-door neighbors, with the Milton Hill Neighbor Association, with individuals who live in the area. I know that we've met specifically with Brian once, we met twice with Alex, we've met with one member of the Board of Selectmen, we've met with several people who live on the, on Brush Hill Road, and we've conducted a neighbor meeting at the library, and we've had a site walk that essentially got rained out, but we did have a site walk and then a meeting with the Neighborhood Association at the, at the St. Pius Church. The original plan that we showed was about fifty-two units. One of the issues for the property is that while it has very nice front, a front door, the back door is the City of Boston Housing Authority property, not a very good next-door neighbor, and a lot, it's sort of a trapezoidal property so that the, the rear lot line is much longer than the front lot line. And so how to deal with what's back there relative to a transition and how the unit count might look? We started with fifty-two, we've come down to approximately thirty-six. There would be some level of, of affordable, thinking at this point, ten to fifteen percent affordable. Obviously, the greater the density on the affordable side, the greater the number of units. But we think roughly four units per acre is a, is a nice volume for that particular property. And the alternative, you know, to pursue, if Jack were to pursue something like a forty B development, you're probably looking at something that's closer to seventy acres, seventy units, and, you know, could be a combination of rentals or, or ownership. But, you know, Jack's done some forty B, not much, it's not his preferred approach. He really, they, they've got this sweet spot through Eastern Mass and Southern New England that is really this age-restricted-by-design townhouse concept, that's limited in a number of children, just by the way that the, the units sell. And it, and we think that the site is ideal for that. The goal is to, and one of the reasons I think that, you know, we reached out to Alex to suggest that the planning board might want to start quickly a conversation on this issue of, of condominiums development, because, you know, we know there's an October town meeting, and we'd like to be into the, a process through the summer that arrives at an article that has a chance to be, to be passed by town meeting. And so whether that's a series of detailed workshops on potential site planning, whether it's a broader issue that incorporates other properties, we're somewhat ambivalent. I think that I would agree that the, that the better approach is to create a format, a zoning format for some sort of condominium development that's got some flexibility. You know, I look at this Dover piece having to go back to town meeting, you know, that's, that could be very cumbersome, although I think the first time out, one of my questions would be, okay, if we were coming before town meeting with something like that, and we had a site plan that we've been through, would we go back-to-back, get, get the bylaw approved, and then get the designate, the authority for designation type approved as well, obviously contingent upon the Attorney General's Office approving the bylaw? But that would then, at least for the first one, if there were developments coming in, they wouldn't have to wait till May or the following October, hook onto the bylaw, if the bylaw got enacted in October. Beyond that, certainly anyone new coming in the door would just be simply looking at the next town meeting in front of them and doing what was necessary to create a plan, meet with neighbors, meet with the planning board, to secure, to present to town meeting, and secure and get the approval at that next town meeting. I think probably less cumbersome as the process gets going, but I think from an initial perspective, I would have a question as to how that would lay out. So those are my preliminary thoughts. It's possible, if you think about, some, maybe some simple amendments to the attached cluster zoning, you might eliminate the minimum acreage requirement, you might eliminate the percentage, you know, reduce the percentage of open space. I mean, if you, if you think about the attached cluster, and Jack and I were just playing with some numbers, if you had a thirty-acre parcel, seventy percent of which is open space, you're left with nine acres, that's, that's developable. If you arrived at, I think, fifty
Fifty-two units.
Two units. You'd have
The density is a derivative of the total acreage divided by twenty-five thousand square feet.
Come on in, John.
We were just, I was just doing it, so, you know, I'll finish the thought. So the attached housing is, just to do guerrilla math, the twenty-five-acre minimum, I can't do the arithmetic well in my head, so I went to thirty, seventy percent, that's twenty-one, nine acres. The density is a derivative of the total acreage, and let's assume it's all dry, just to keep the conversation easy. And it's twenty-five thousand square foot per unit, so do all that arithmetic, and that ends up with fifty-two units on nine acres, which is almost a density of six units to the acre, which is, is, is approaching an apartment kind of density. What's interesting is there's a story and a half limitation on height, so you're not going up, but you really are, you're intensely using that, that particular footprint. Maybe that was what was intended.
It's two and a half stories.
Yeah, two and a half, no, I think a story and a half. Well, I might, I might be wrong.
I think it's two and a half.
Okay, maybe I misread, so. But the point, I guess, that Ned was saying is, there is a fabric there in that particular provision that could be looked at by you in a different light, as a way to create structure to address, what are you, what are you trying to address? You're trying to address some control, which you lose if you force someone into the forty B, the comprehensive permit route. Control on what? Control on count, housing type, you know, do you prefer for sale or for rent? Massing, sort of architectural scale and massing with compatibility. I think I heard someone say, you know, how does it blend with the surroundings?
Setback.
Set, I was just going to say setbacks to things, buffers and, and the like. Parking, another thing, another big derivative of density is parking. You know, the surface goes to then impervious, which then goes to screening. So what, what I've tried to embark upon with Ned is, is, is there a way to affect an appropriate, for, for Northland, it's to first start with the land and develop a good land use plan. Unfortunately, I think the Comprehensive Permit Act does nothing but generate poor land use plans. It's just a numbers game. Where we've been very successful over forty years is, let's look at the land and come up with a good land use plan, a plan that's compatible with whatever, context, abutters, traffic, scenic roads, vegetation, topography, wetlands, and the like. So I don't, you know, the attached cluster is the closest, but, but, but Dover, I know Dover intimately because I am presently trying to do something in Dover, and I look hard at this, their bylaw. Unfortunately, it's, it's far too many steps to maybe. It essentially forces you to, it's forcing me to go the forty B route, or a LIP. We're discussing both.
Might as well say what a LIP is.
Local Initiative Project, which is, some people
Friendly forty B.
Some people think is a friendly forty B. It's a negotiated forty B, maybe a, a more, more, more harmonious negotiation.
When the town says, okay, we want to have input, they talk to the developer and reach an agreement.
Right. It's a two-way conversation as opposed to a traditional, what we read about in the press on forty Bs, is a one-way conversation with a big stick. There are others, Sudbury has a bylaw that you can look at, it's called the Senior Residential Development, S R D, I believe. All the units must be age-restricted, there is an intent, there is a density bonus provision. Their density is a calc, calculation based upon underlying derivative as of right zoning times a multiple bedrooms per approved, approvable lot. And it does the sort of the same thing, it has the same sort of mathematical formula that Dover does. And then all of the other things that are frankly just as important or more important to coming up with a good land plan that's compatible for the neighborhood, the abutters, and the project, you know, and the, and the business that one is, that the sponsor is trying to promulgate. A good, a good land plan, a good project is a good business.
So obviously, we're, we're coming to the table with a live project. So working with the planning board to arrive at an outcome, and obviously working with the neighborhood and the abutters and others, is going to be important. And to do it in a, in a timely but appropriately reasonable, reasonably timed manner Um, and to do it in a, in a timely but appropriately reasonable, reasonably timed manner, I think is, is necessary. People need to, at different junctures, need to stop and think, okay, is this too much, or does this do too much, or is this whatever? And we're, so with October in mind, you know, we're here, and we want to move forward into a process that arrives at something that I think that we can all, um, benefit from. The outstanding goal would be if it, if it were umbrella-type zoning, that created parameters that either provided for special permit processes to be addressed by the, by the planning board, or something, um, similar. But, in my mind, the town, you know, we're under a lot of pressure, we've got a five-hundred unit plus or minus bogey, uh, to get to affordability. We're pressured to put in place a housing production plan. Plans are all, in my mind, plans are all good when you're swirling at about five to ten thousand feet, but when you come down to the ground, plan's not worth the paper, necessarily worth the paper it's written on, um, unless it's taken into account significant, um, issues. But, I think the zoning, at the end of the day, needs to be sufficient to provide a significant carrot to avoid the forty B, uh, approach. There's gotta be something there that arrives at a reasonably, reasonable amount of density, um, that's sufficient to avoid the forty B. And doesn't just say, well, you can cluster, uh, and, and, um, but you end up with an equivalent amount of units that you ended up if you were just doing a subdivision.
May I ask you a question? So, in addition to density, what other things do you consider carrots? For example, we've heard from other developers that expediting the process is also a carrot, um, and, and, you know, kind of streamlining it. So, what other carrots are?
I think, I think expediting the process is a double-edged sword. Um, the, the concern, the, the flipside of that is that the abutters, the residents, the community feel as if they don't have a say. They're stakeholders in the process and they deserve a voice, so I think there has to be a balance, um, in that. The special permit process is that, you know, as a consumer of it, I, I cynically call the special permit process essentially a negotiated permit process, where the planning board, or the zoning board appeals, whoever the governing board, essentially has the leverage to negotiate, uh, in the negotiations, as, as opposed to an as-of-right process. But, you're at, as an applicant, you're asking to do something that is, um, different than the existing fabric, to some degree, of the, of the neighborhood. So, that's the quid pro quo, and, and a reasonable sponsor will accept that. So, one thing is appropriate density, balanced with buffers and setbacks and parking and height and all those sort of very, very real tangible things. Uh, I think a town meeting vote, like you see in the Dover thing, is a huge discouragement. Two-thirds vote is a high hurdle. Um, I think that is appropriate for zoning articles.
Well, I, I think the proposal, the first time around was two-thirds to pass the article, then majority vote to pass the project. Is that correct? Is that the-
Well, I mean, it can be, it can be whatever. That was, that's what I thought the two-thirds was too great, uh, if there were a town meeting. I mean, if the zoning-
Not a standing vote on that issue.
Uh, then-
Sorry, I didn't hear that part.
Maybe a, a majority vote on the second, second step.
Yep.
One thing about, uh, why this zoning will be, uh, so attractive to you, is that a forty B controls the developer's profit very significantly, and, uh, this does not. And, uh, so, this, there's a lot more profit in one of these than there would be in a forty B, um, if, you know, we can get to where I think we're going to get.
Right. To, to your point, I think the, the other one is, what is the level of affordability? 'Cause there is an economic drag. Um, you know, is it, is it twenty-five, or is it ten, or is it slightly greater than ten, so that for every new housing unit that you're adding to this existing stock, at least you're not just treading water, you're, you're catching up-
At town meeting, I made the point that your base is determined by the decennial census back in, of two thousand, and until two thousand and ten, every-
Uh, the words, you know, uh, two thousand and twenty.
The, the denominator.
Right. So, it's every unit, a few, ten percent, every unit produced under that ten percent of, of is an additional unit, which gets you closer to the goal.
So, that's, that's right, that's a good point. Um, I love when you go with that. So, I think affordability-
I just, I, I say that because we had the, uh, we had someone who says, why should we just tread water? Let's increase the percentage to whatever it is. And, and definitely not treading water at ten percent. We're, we're meeting what the state has said is the goal. The goal is ten percent of the units, and if a developer does ten percent of the units, it seems to me the developer has met the goal. But, that can be discussed.
Do you add, uh, maybe just one other thought on this issue of certainty and pace of play and permitting? I think there's a, there's a difference between this type of development where you're chronic, you're changing what's there, and it takes time, and it does take time. I think there's a frustration with the pace of play in as-of-right processes. The amount of time it takes to get to yes, uh, when you're simply doing something that's as-of-right, that takes too long, and, and procedures somehow need to be changed for that. But I think when you're doing something that's significantly different, um, you're dropping something in from out of space almost, that's completely different. It does take time, there's a lot of sensitivity that goes with it, and you just can't allow that to come rushing through. And I, I don't think town meeting in particular, I don't think the planning board, um, at the end of the day, would accept something that just quickly went through. And those that try to do it, don't get there.
I think my, my biggest concern with the, the double town meeting vote would be, it's, it's not necessarily expedience of process, and it's not necessarily certainty of process, but, uh, as much as the developer's profitability is, is restricted under forty B, perhaps a, an equal, uh, restriction on profitability is time. And if you have to go to town meeting twice or three times, that's eighteen months before you even potentially get to the special permit process theoretically. That's a, it's a tall, that's, that's a lot of time to be having your basis burning away.
I-
I, I think it, it's very discouraging for a developer, and as, as, you know, I, as any developer would point out, it's a lot of, it's a lot of meetings and a lot of time for, for a very uncertain result.
How would this development, uh, how would the bylaws, uh, frame this development as it stands right now?
I would have, the bylaws, uh, this would, uh, this would, this development as it stands right now would have to be a forty B development, because there's nothing in the bylaws allowing it unless they-
No special permit, nothing?
No, nothing. Could not be done.
Unless, unless you got a variance.
But we have, uh, the planning board has, uh, basically committed to introducing a bylaw, uh, to the selectmen by the August first deadline, and, and all these, you know, all the issues are in play, should there be a town being, a second town meeting vote. It's an issue in play. Uh, if so, what kind of a vote? I, I mean, um, we, we want to put as much stuff on the table as we can, so that we can pick through it and, uh, take out, uh, what appears to us to be, uh, most useful, or most valuable, I guess, if we're picking through a lot of stuff. So, thanks. Uh, let's see what-
Question, Emily? Just, yeah. How many acres is the McLan side?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight point four, I believe.
So, you, you don't even have four units an acre there?
I have, well, there's three parcels, each parcel is different. Uh, one parcel, I have the math here somewhere, one parcel's three point four five, one parcel's five point two, and the other one is like four six. Overall, when you do it overall, because it was three different parcels, um, there were wetlands, there were buffers, there was a, there was an arboretum, there was a big buffer, so that, that, that's the one with the three point four five.
But, but the total acreage is thirty-eight.
Yeah, I think you're saying total units is thirty-eight.
Totally.
No, total units was a hundred and twenty.
Oh, okay.
So, total acres was a thirty-eight.
Okay.
And, and we've decided, oh, we've talked about limiting the number of units per acre, using the acreage, not necessarily respecting wetlands or anything, because of the clustering of it. But, right. It's, it's, so, basically, when we talked earlier about a good number being four units an acre, you don't have four units an acre right now.
I, I don't know what the exact math is sitting here.
No, you don't have.
I have a quick question. Emily, you might know the answer to this or not, but do you know if a, a condo bylaw and developments within it could be applied as part of a comprehensive, comprehensive housing plan, as a, as a potential way to get to your goal?
That's a recommendation.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It'd definitely be a recommendation.
It's part of your plan, and it, it would count towards your being able to use your comprehensive plan to move your forty B away.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. You put it, saying that we're putting the zoning in, and then you'd have to, what you'd have to do is probably take the parcels that we're thinking about, estimate how many units would go on each, and put those in as part of your goal, and then, yes, I don't see why that wouldn't work. So-
Okay. Thanks.
Except for the fact that they, you know, interesting, the housing production plan says, where are you going to encourage-
Right.
-comprehensive permit development, not-
Right.
And they do mention elsewhere that, uh, you can go and rezone, but they, uh, they seem to think that because the DHCD has all these, um, comp permit people on staff, that they need comp permits.
Well, I think the reason they think that is that, um, what's important after you create the units is keeping them on the, the subsidized housing inventory list, and it's much easier to keep them on the list if they're done that way. But there are other ways to keep them on the list, that, and other strategies for doing so, that we can talk about at our housing workshop. But Brian and I were just, spent the day yesterday at an inclusionary zoning workshop, and actually have, we've come back with, um, sort of the latest thinking from the state. And I don't know, Brian, you wanna talk about some of the principles?
Right. Well, first I just wanted to say something about forty B projects. Daphne and I were involved in, uh, the comprehensive plan for the town of Acton, and they have an Avalon forty B project there, like many towns do. Avalon is everywhere. Uh, and it was a pretty big development, I think, two, two hundred and some units. But, the schoolchildren issue came up, and Avalon promised, at the beginning, that there would be no more than twenty students generated by these two hundred units or so, because they were one and two-bedroom units. Well, they got eighty students out of it, and it, and it's basically, uh, a function of it being a rental. Uh, if you've got an ownership situation, it's, it's quite different, because the, the families that, uh, and individuals that move into the, uh, to an ownership unit tend not to have the number of children that the, that the renters do.
Well, the renters were using it as a way into the town for the school system-
Right.
-until they could find an affordable unit.
I live in Acton.
There you go.
I know all about it.
How many, how many, how many, how many acres was the two hundred units on? And I'm not going down the same road, trying to figure out how many units per acre.
I think it was, uh, about thirty or forty acres.
What I'm, what I'm going to with this is, how many tracts of land do we have in Milton that are thirty acres?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have the tracts of land like that to build-
Well, you look at Milton, where they, they, they went bought up, uh, three-
Exactly.
How many acres is that?
They can do land assembly and, and they'll get, they'll get thirty acres.
I mean, Governor Stone, that, after that.
There's a couple of big estates that if you put them together, potentially.
Yeah, Carver Estate.
Three to four.
I just want to correct something I pulled out of my sheet. We have twenty-six acres, twenty-six point two acres in, in Belmont, and if you do the math, it's four point six five units to the acre. And I can, I can give you the sheet, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
No, that's all right. My in-laws are from Belmont, and I'm familiar with the site, and it would give me some perspective of density.
But, obviously, uh, four point six five is not four. I've been with, this is just, this is something we're gonna have to figure out what densities are going to be, or we're going to, uh, have to figure out how we can, uh, have a better way of, uh, computing density. Maybe, uh, the more your setback, the bigger your density, something of, uh-
You could do it as a, as a combination of setback and density.
I think you'd also need to-
The massing guidelines, because density is also a design issue.
Right.
Did Belmont have an existing condominium zoning by law?
They did not. I went through five years of permitting.
Well, that's a long time.
The other, the other issue about-
A lot of certain data.
Density to think about is that, you know, properties like the Knights of Columbus property, which is a very small property, it's only twenty thousand square feet if you had the property next door, but it's approximate to, um, transit. So, you know, might there be guidelines developed that allow, adjust for density based on what's around?
That's, that's why I, as you're talking, I'm thinking, it'd be so hard to craft this bylaw, and that's why I get back to, you know, maybe better off approaching a new site individually. I, and I know what you're saying about the timing, yet you, both you gentlemen said timing isn't necessarily the big carrot. I know you just said the five years, comment, but you also said that, uh, given that you're implanting something into a neighborhood that's totally different than what's been there, it, it should take some time, and the people that have a stake in it, the neighbors, the abutters, should have some time to understand what's going on and-
No question.
Have some input, so.
Well, you know, there's, there's a couple of ways we could do it. I mean, one way is to determine the characteristics based on the zone that it's already in. So, if you're in a double A zone, then you can develop condos this way, if you're in A zone, you can develop condos that way. The other way of doing it is to develop them based by what's around them. So, if you're near a single family, it has to be single family, if you're near two families, it can be that. If you're closer to transit oriented, you can have a higher density. So, that's one way we're going to have to-
Everything you say makes sense to me, it's, it's, now, this, my laws getting-
How you write that, yeah.
Well, it's interesting, you could almost do it as a factor. I mean, you've got, you've got forty thousand acre zoning in Milton, you've got twelve thousand acre zoning, twelve, one for twelve thousand, or one for twenty eight thousand?
Eighty, forty, twenty, seventy-five.
Yeah, so you could make it a factor of, of each step, you know, you can have this percentage, or, you know.
The relative density, they'd have to be the same, just to be fair. I don't want to be in, you know, Zone C, and you tell me, well, you can, you know, enormous density, but, oh, and you're A, you're double A, you can't have-
Well, but then you have to look, and this is why I was saying, you might want to do it based on what's around. If you look at Zone C, a lot of Zone C isn't actually seventy-five hundred lots. You have a lot of five thousand square foot lots. So, if you're looking at how, what's already there and trying to match that, you don't necessarily want to do it based on a seventy-five hundred square lot.
Most of Zone Z is substantially less than seventy-five.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, a lot like the-
Because most of Zone Z pre-existed zoning.
Exactly.
I think, uh, the Knights of Columbus, I, I think that would loan itself to, uh, it's standing on its own.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think the developer would do better if it stood on its own, and tried to craft some law around it.
I mean, if I were gonna do it-
Well, but, standing on its own would mean that one would craft a specific Knights of Columbus article, which would go after the Thayer Nursery article, and then we would craft a St. Pius article, which would go after the Knights of Columbus article, and then we would, we would, you know, what we're, that's what we're trying to avoid, and, and you, you point out that it's going to be difficult, and there's no question it's going to be difficult.
Except-
And it may be that at the end of the process, we say, it's all gotta be specific, site-specific.
Even, even if you, if you craft this enormous zoning, it's, it would seem to be everybody that comes forward is gonna have to have, uh, a dozen variances.
Yeah, but see, if you look at Knights of Columbus based on the, on St. Pius, if you just take those two, and you talk about zoning based on the characteristics of the nearby parcels, Knights of Columbus has something that's very different from St. Pius.
It's denser.
No, it's next to commercial.
You can build in waivers to, to, uh, your language, and it's done quite frequently. You know, uh, you can specify as much, maybe as the Dover one did, and I've looked at that, and that is quite specific on things like parking and lighting and, and stormwater disposition, whatever, but, uh, it's possible to allow the planning board to grant waivers with-
Except the town meeting isn't going to grant- Except the town meeting isn't going to grant the planning board the ability to disregard the zoning.
Plus, where I was going with the Knights of Columbus is you may want it, you may want it to be.
Waivers are basically.
Guys, talking. The difference with the Knights of Columbus is that because it's next to commercial, you may in fact want to consider it as a mixed-use district, an overlay there, which would open up all sorts of possibilities for your client. And that's very different from Pius. You may not need to have multiple separate articles. You may have one that deals with condominiums and residential areas.
So within this bylaw, you're going to have, you're going to have districts within this bylaw.
No, 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 you might have an overlay district that's separate from the bylaw.
Yeah, overlay for condominium residential, overlay for condominium commercial.
Now you're getting into multiple articles like.
But you only need two potentially, as opposed to one for each.
Then you're going to need an overlay for somebody else, and an overlay for somebody else.
That's our job, is to craft articles.
No, no, and I, and I don't mind that, I just, because Alex doesn't.
And after you do this beautiful index as well.
I mean, I've defined, I've defined what we're trying to do. We're trying to avoid doing it piecemeal. I mean.
Right.
St. Pius, if it isn't done in, if it doesn't fall within a broad scheme, will have to be done piecemeal because they're eager to, they're eager to have something. And if we say, sorry, we're going to wait till next spring, they may, they may take a brute that we don't like. So we're going to make sure that, we're, we're trying to, trying to put something together. We're getting the issues on the table, and then we'll discuss the issues. But we, we shouldn't be discouraged that they're hard issues.
That's, that's.
It just makes it, it makes it more challenging.
My last point.
There's another.
Waivers are, waivers are always great because you have a zoning bylaw that says, but the planning board can waive any of this stuff if they see fit. And then you, once again, allow five people who don't have any, I mean, they have, I'm just saying, they're not trained urban planners. Not all of them. But just giving these five people the ability to waive the stuff that the, that the town meeting wants is, can be very problematic.
Well, it can be, but you can make the waivers provision-specific.
No.
Do we develop a special permit?
It's not on everything. So there's one more issue that we haven't talked about.
I think you're directly restricting things in the special permit.
Point as well, which is those affordable units. There are three ways of providing them: onsite, offsite, or they can be bought out. And that's a decision the town has to make if it's going to be in an ordinance. And it sounds, seems to me that the Dover, I haven't looked at it as closely as Brian has, at least implied that they needed to be onsite. It's my understanding that of the ordinances across the state, it's more usual that they're provided offsite. And I know that in Boston, in Cambridge, that they're, they're bought out a lot. So I don't know if that, you know, if that's something that needs to be thought through.
Yeah, they use the term cash out.
Cash out.
Just, you know, the, the payment that is made in lieu of providing.
And then you just, it seems that you just established a housing, affordable housing trust, so that's where that would go.
It's going to have $5 million in it when Pulte buys the town farm.
That's different money.
What?
That's not, that doesn't go in there.
Where does it go?
Governor Stone.
Oh, oh, I did, it does, but it's still going to be used for the poor. It's going to be used for housing.
Not necessarily housing.
Well, partially for housing.
The trustees have to decide how.
Well, it's going to be used for the poor.
Are there other projects out there that we need to have come up to the table and tell us what they're up to?
We're going to have, we're going to have the people who are, want to, want to give us information in this public discussion, come and join us and share.
Excellent.
Whatever, whether they have projects or not.
That'll be good.
So, thanks for.
Thank you.
That.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Who else wants to be? Okay, Mr. O'Neill. Why don't you sit where Ned was?
Thank you.
Because if you don't, you're not going to have a microphone.
Good evening, Frank O'Neill, 46 Columbine Road, Milton. Congratulations on your appointment, Mr. Chairman. We own a property at 41 Pleasant Street in Milton. It's a three-acre parcel with a single-family house on it. It has two zonings and by right, we think we could develop several houses, seven or eight houses on the, on the site with, with planning board approval, of course. We backed into Article 38 on the town meeting for the 11-acre, 11 condo development. And I believe that was tabled, but when you take a look at the site at 41 Pleasant Street.
It was actually sent back to the planning board for study.
Yep.
Thank you. When you take a look at the site, we think there's merit for the highest and best use to put condominiums there. So that could be a smart development. But when you take a look at the big picture, it's, it's really up to the town of Milton, or is it up to the planning board? I guess it probably does come to the planning board. And what is smart development? I guess if you put seven or eight houses there with three or four bedrooms, we're bringing children into the equation, and is there anything wrong with that? Of course not. But what's the highest and best use? What is the planning board? What is, what does the town think should go there? And that's a $64,000 question that I think we've been circling tonight and will, will continue to circle. So I guess what we're saying is the, the Article 38 was tabled, and does it have merit to take a look at the, the entire three-acre parcel? To look at some type of condominium development. I'm certainly not referring to 40B, but smart development for that parcel. The land runs from the, down by Cook's, Bent's factory, up to the town land and then the, the golf course road. And it, we think it has merit for condos as well as single-family houses. So it's a tall order to, to come up with legislation, to get this approved and, you know, if it did get approved. But I think academically, it's probably smart to take a look at that parcel and many other parcels and, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down on that. If it's a, does not get approved, thumbs down. I'm sure we'll, we'll forward with residential development. But I think in the big picture, it has merit to, you know, to look at this particular site. I give you ten.
The advantage of going to town meeting for the 50% approval would be that when, if we come up with the, with zoning for condominiums and it can be applied anywhere, obviously, when we go to seek its passage, it, it might fail just because people didn't like the, something in it. And having the second bite of the apple, that, you know, these things will come back to you, might make passage of the zoning, I think it would make passage of the zoning significantly more likely. And it's important because, of course, if we come up with some zoning that applies to everything and it gets, it gets, it gets denied, it doesn't get passed, then we are in a potential fix. So there may be a political advantage to using that double bite of the apple. And, and of course, in the first instance, projects that are sufficiently well along to get a bite at the apple, the second bite at the same town meeting next October would, it would save some time for those people who are ready.
I do think it's important to remember, though, that town meeting is an important process to vote in the zoning legislation, certainly. But the five people sitting on the planning board are elected, not appointed. And they are sitting before a public body that can come in at any public meeting and speak on behalf or against any proposal. And the five people sitting in front of you are charged with listening to the public feedback and making a decision for the town's, in the town's best interest. So if everything is going to go back and forth between town meeting, I, I start to question at some point why we're here as a, as these five people.
Well, I think it's a check and balance system that, that works. If theoretically, if Article 38 passed and we proposed X amount of condominiums, that project would have been subject to the discretion of the planning board. They could.
I agree.
Regulate it and, and should regulate.
And we should regulate it.
Absolutely, without a doubt.
But if we're regulating it through town meeting, I'm not sure why we're all spending our evenings here as planning board.
Good point, good point.
There would be a question too. We go through the, comes before us, we go through our technical review, say, yes, this meets the zoning. Goes through town meeting, town meeting says, yes, we like these concept plans class that meets the zoning, that's great, we're going to vote in favor of it. Comes back to the, the planning board, starting to do the full process of the special permit. Something comes up, something gets changed. Do we have an issue where town meeting members come back and say, but that's not what we voted for at town meeting? Maybe there was a mistake in the application, maybe soil conditions came through and there had to be, you know, somehow there has to be a change. Do we, the planning board, have an issue if the final plan doesn't meet what was at town meeting?
There's no question that avoiding the second bite of the apple has advantages. The question is, what is going to get the two-thirds of folk to get zoning? And that's a political question. And I, you know, it's not a planning question.
Planning in politics sometimes works.
I am inclined to think that the town meeting would be, would be happier if they had that. But it may be that we don't, it may be that we're going to just say, this isn't going to work and we won't do it. It's just an idea on the table with the other ideas. We have some, we have your units on the table, Frank, but we don't, and we have your thought that it would be, might be a better development. What you might do is do a, do a concept plan. And that would be probably useful as to what you would think that a reasonable condominium development might look like.
Sure.
And you don't have to get, you know, I try and make it reasonably disabled. You don't need it.
It would allow us to test standards, you know, if we're looking at implementing certain standards and guidelines and we have a, a concept plan for you, it'll allow us to test those against that concept plan, see if we're being either unduly permissive or unduly restrictive.
And again, unfortunately, all sites are unique.
Yeah.
The back of our property is, it abuts the town land and the golf course and the horse farm, and so they're all different.
Well, and I think an interesting component to your site is that it abuts a probably non-conforming, but a, a commercial use all the same. So there's a question of whether there's a mixed-use component to this that, that might work, so all should be looked at.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, who else has input?
I have comments.
You have good input? This would be good. We, we've got, we don't have a solution yet, but we're looking forward to.
We're not going to have a solution tonight.
To being there. Almost immediately.
I don't have a project to propose. Cheryl Tagayas, member of the Master Plan Committee, warrant committee member, and town meeting member from Precinct Nine. As I initially looked at this language on the warrant committee, and I've had some thoughts about it, and then listening to folks tonight, I'd just like to suggest that it be considered not only for its use as a deterrent to 40B, but actually consider how it might be advantageous to expand the kinds of housing stock we have at Milton. One of the things that concerns me would be age restrictions, and in part because we're talking about aging in place, and we're talking about not isolating seniors. And we've got a lot of senior housing already that it's age-restricted and it's isolated. And I think we want, we're talking about healthy communities and we want to get people out. Maybe we want multi-generational living. And maybe smaller sites with smaller numbers of units might be more suitable for multi-generational living. So I think we need to think carefully how we can craft something which could attract things that we might not have right now. And part of that is another, when we're looking at the cluster zoning and using that as a way to preserve maybe large houses or natural features of a property, I was thinking the same thing about this particular bylaw and it, what it could accommodate. There's a house on Kent Ave, a large house that was sold, before it was sold, there had been a larger piece of property and it had been subdivided. So the large house was renovated and a new house built next to it, and now there's clear cut of every single tree on the Blue Hill Ave side of it. And that's really, I think, quite unfortunate because there you can do single-family houses. So that meets the bylaw, it's as of right. And yet, we could have had a house that might have been condominiums, and maybe another building built with condominiums, and we could save a bunch of the trees. So I think if we think, look at it as a way, we could use it as a tool to help preserve some of the character in town, then I think there, this could be a much better bylaw than just something that's viewed to prevent or as an alternative to a 40B.
So one thing that comes to mind when you say this, Cheryl, is that if you use, if you do allow for off-site creation or for the cash out, then you can have scattered off-site units that'll be, that will be smaller scale, that you maybe can select the locations. So like Emily was saying, you know, closer to transportation, or like you're saying, not isolated. So that's the advantage of allowing for off-site creation or for, for cash out. So that's.
Well, and if you had, you have to look at the affordability. If you have a small lot with a small number of units and you're looking at something which might be difficult to absorb even one affordable unit if it's, let's say it's four units. But if you had a contribution into a fund.
Right.
And then maybe you get four affordable units on a lot someplace. So these are the things I think that I certainly think and hope that the Master Plan Committee is going to look at in terms of what kind of housing we'd like to attract that we don't have. I mean, there's lots of young families now who have a ton of student debt. If they're looking to get a starter, a new household, where are they going to start? They're starting in rental because they can't, they've got too much debt to take on. But, but do we want to discourage young families from coming to Milton? The fact of the matter is that people get older, are going to need to sell their houses. And at some point, if you don't have families with children to buy them, we'll have, we'll have some issues. I think the latest census had 27% of Milton's population is living alone in a single-family home.
A single-family home.
That, that's something, as we have aging baby boomers, I think that some towns who are thinking a little bit more proactively about this, I think are going to fare a little bit better.
Well, also, Brian, you want to talk a little bit about the distinction between the estimated and projected population increase versus the household increase?
Well, yeah. It's, it's important for master planning and for planning in general to understand that it's really the households that, that are growing fairly rapidly. Whereas the population is, is growing slowly. I think it's supposed to only grow up to 3% more by, by 2030. Whereas households, because of the thinning out of the households, fewer people living in, in individual quarters, is going to increase up to 14%.
In Milton.
By, by that period. So there, there will be a need for additional housing. And that's been documented by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Even though the, the perception is that, oh, we really have all the three and four-bedroom homes that we're going to need when you look at the demographics. When you look, when you look further at the demographics, you see that we're going to need quite a few more to, one and two-bedroom units to, to satisfy that. And to get a lot of people to stay in, in Milton, you know, the older people sell their homes but still want to live in town. They need to have that opportunity.
And, and, and in addition to that, it sort of goes back to, what is the purpose of all this? Some towns make a decision and they say, our purpose is to try to get to 10% as fast. as fast as we can because we don't want 40B, we don't want to deal with 40B. And other towns take another approach, especially towns that have a low percentage to begin with and a difficult time, you know, moving quickly. What is your actual need? And focus on that. I mean, I think it's, what is it, one-third of the people who live in Milton today could not afford the average-priced house? There are a lot of actual needs for affordable, for smaller units, for different kinds of units, for seniors to live in, for these young people to live in, for, that's actually here today. And that can slowly start to bring you up to, you can find ways of, you know, working with the state to have some of that count, but maybe you take that, maybe you make that decision. But you really have to decide what it is that you want. And that's what we're going to talk about next Thursday. Good segue for me.
All right. Well, I think that that's, I think you're right. Off-site units, one thing you've got to, if you say to the developer, you don't have to build your affordable unit onsite because it might impact the fancy people who you're going to sell to, just exactly where is the developer going to pump down these units? We don't have a lot of vacant lots. I suppose the developer could go into the C-zone and buy up some houses and fix them up-
That's one thing they do.
... to code, but it seems to me that it's certainly the easiest and undoubtedly, in my mind, the best way is simply say, create your units onsite. The DHCD has numerous programs where they say, you've got to make your affordable units look exactly the same as your market rate units. And people making $64,000 a year are, no, I don't think they're going to be dysfunctional. Do you?
Yeah.
All right. So maybe onsite is a good thing. I think it's certainly easiest, but onsite, since there will be the housing fund and we'll have money, then it's got to be used. I was thinking the same thing for the Governor's Stodden Trust and their $5 million, but they can-
And then there's also the CPA that will be recommending you pass, so that you can use that-
The Community Preservation Act.
... as an act. And then those funds can also be used, a third of those funds.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. I don't think you've got us there quite yet.
Just some thoughts.
But we will, we will get back to you. Okay, who else is, Mr. Cronin, come and, come and invite us. I was hoping that you would come and invite us, and here you are.
Well, I think you're having a great discussion and a lot of good questions. And it sort of ties into the discussions that we are hoping to have in the master plan committee.
Would you move his microphone?
The, a couple of items that came up in the master plan committee, one of them was the schools.
Too loud now.
Glenn Pavelcheck, who's assistant superintendent of schools, advised the committee that this, Milton Public Schools has a design capacity of 4,100. And they are, they have a current enrollment of 4,000, so you can see that their, schools are close to being full, and I think there's a lot of parents of school-aged children who will be concerned about what the plans are for the future that is developed by the master plan or really by the planning board in the town meeting.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
Do you happen to know the ratio of the ages in that, in those numbers?
I do.
You do?
So the elementary schools are completely at capacity.
Okay.
And then the middle school and the high school shares that leeway.
It's a problem with, with what you said about the elementary schools, this is a problem that's long, it's not going to go away.
It's not going to go away.
Okay, thank you.
And also, it's probably going to be the target of new homes, new three, four, five-bedroom homes, it's going to be at the, at the elementary level first. Again, looking at the numbers, there are about 9,400 units in town, 8,100 or so family houses, of single-family houses, a few two-family houses in there. But that's, that represents the body of housing in the town that families are attracted to. And the, so the numbers sort of come out with one student for every two houses. And as you look to building new houses, we currently have four being built on Gun Hill, four at the Women's Club, five at the Boyle Estate on Rushill Road, one by the Brook, on Brook Road, and maybe a couple others that I'm not aware of. Twenty-three coming at the town farm, and they all look to be averaging four bedrooms anyways. So you can see that we're on a roll to doing exactly the thing that we might not want to be doing. And that's why this, talking about condos and talking about 40Bs is very important. 40B has really sort of shattered our confidence in the 1938 A, B, and C bylaw, which we had relied on for so many years. It really, the planning board has to have a new strategy of how they're going to do it. They've done, they've done pretty well. I told you, 8,100 or so of the family, but there's also something that's happened in recent years, beginning around 1965, when the Board of Appeals approved the Milton Hill House. And then that was followed by Uncoody House, which I might add, you talk about heights, height limitations, that has a 65-foot height in a residential neighborhood. So, and, you know, they got away with it. I mean, it fits in all right. So sometimes if there's enough setbacks, enough buffer zones, the planning board could think about higher, higher, not necessarily the old two-and-a-half-story. So the Uncoody House, it then was followed by Winter Valley, Quissett Brook, which is a market condominium with 57 or eight units built. And Pine Tree Brook Homes, which I think has 99 units, both of those were on 30-acre parcels. Then Fuller Village, and Tucker Burr, and Rushwood Condominiums. So those are, we have five market rent condos and a few elderly restricted condos. Pine Tree, Pine Tree Brook Home, which is on the Lamb Estate, is almost market. I mean, it's sort of, the people who organized and built it and bought the land, built it, built the units for themselves, and now they keep rolling over. But it's age-restricted, but it's an interesting concept in that they're really not a nonprofit as is Fuller and the MRE units. So what are those multifamily houses we just talked about, that list of them, there's 1,100 units, over 10% of the town's dwelling units are multifamily, and, you know, we're pretty comfortable with those. I like to think, one of the reasons was the brilliance of the planning board requiring 150-foot setbacks.
And 30 acres. And 30 acres.
Well, yeah. Well, maybe, I still think the setback is the important part that makes, makes Pine Tree Brook Home so acceptable. You drive by- It's not like in Randolph or in Old Brook where these developments are in your face, or I might say Elliot Street, where the, where the developments are hard up against the sidewalk. These setbacks really make it, make it a lot more acceptable than in some of the other towns. But they have 1,100, I think it's actually 11, units, and their valuation adds up to greater than the valuation of our business district, our non-conforming businesses, Metracasas and Tedeschi's. So that's amazing, and we really, we really weren't looking for that as for tax money, but that's how it's worked out. They're a real engine of tax revenue for the town. So as you plan condominiums, you really can see that, and you know, the schools need the money. I mean, they're, at that town meeting, they were explaining they go up four-and-a-half percent a year recently, and so that's way over the two-and-a-half. So that's, that's an area that's, you know, very important aside from providing housing for people who need it or who want it. And some of that, some of that new condominium can be luxury. Shirley 88 Wath is luxury. And you have, what, a couple of affordables in 36 Central, that's not seeming to bother anybody too much, so, you know, there's some real opportunities for really careful planning going forward. And maybe shifting our thinking away from, we're still going to be a family-oriented community, we're still going to have 8,000 family homes. They turn over at the rate of about 300 a year, so there's, and, right now, everything is sold out. I mean, there's no vacancies at Quissett Brook or Pine Tree Brook Homes. Fuller's running with a 98% occupancy. And Winter Valley, I know, has one assisted living unit available right now, very attractive assisted living program that they have, you know, two meals a day and housekeeping. So those are just some comments I wanted to leave with you, saying you're headed in the right direction to work on this.
Thank you.
Well, we have AA, A, B, and C zoning, and we're not thinking of, at least not in this exercise, thinking of changing them. We're thinking of basically providing for an opportunity for developers to build condominiums under certain circumstances.
Well, you might, you know, if you're trying to develop strategies to avoid having property being developed under 40B, first of all, you're going to have to reach out to the landowners and offer to work with them. They have to know that there's someone to talk with them about it, or they all need to, they all want to have value added above the present zoning. Now, AA, I was one of the proponents of AA zoning because we said it was unsowed areas. And Sherwin had a big case on it, so we were trying to model ourselves after Sherwin, wouldn't that be nice? But now, the sewer line on Rushill Road has been moved from, moved, extended from Paul's Bridge all the way up to Louisville Avenue by Fuller and then by Wakefield and by the Montessori School. So it's already, that area is all sewed, and it's within a few yards of the Caberys. And, you know, if you think of it that way, and you see Caberys on for 2A, AA, and you're saying, is that why, is that how we want to develop the Caberys State 2A? Or is it, is it really have this, with these beautiful, so three or four mansions that are set back 200, 250 feet, and there's all kinds of space behind them up to the Blue Hills, isn't that an area where you could do luxury condominiums, set back, parking under, and really make it something equivalent to the San Jacinto Estates or something of Brookline, you know, something really creative, innovative, and still keep it away from the abutting Caberlyane houses and the, so have a well-designed, well-buffeted, but maybe a little taller than we normally think of? So this might almost get fixed on-
I thought that when we just passed the cluster amendments, they actually were designed with carburetor in mind, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it would indeed, the cluster would probably involve children. But I don't think that there's any way around children. I just don't.
There is one way, but I'm not going to mention it until it is-
We're not against children, and-
But I'm certainly making places for the, for older people to be able to move into so they can sell their houses to people with children. It will encourage a lot of older people to sell their houses, and it will increase the school population, but that's just the way it is. And we're going to have to come to grips with the fact that the schools may be a little too small.
Yeah, yes, that's true, but, and we don't know what the safety factor is beyond the capacity numbers that they tell us.
But certainly, you know, if, if the Caberys don't want to do cluster, which it seems to be, would do exactly what you were talking about in a way even better than doing condos, we want to come up with something that could be applied there, which would provide the open space as well as an attractive urban design.
The cluster bylaw, and, you know, again, I go back to Doris Plink and Marjorie Jeffrey's wanting to have cluster bylaws back in the 60s and 70s, but the problem with it is that the open spaces put where the developer wants, you, the open space can't be on the front of the property where the town might want it, and that's the type of thing that-
Why not?
Hmm?
Why not?
Well, I didn't think that you could tell them where to put the open space.
It can be.
Okay. But that's, that's the, that's the need to develop the Governor Walcott property, owned by the Caberys now, is to have, preserve some of the open space in front of the Devon House, in front of the, in front of the Governance House.
Absolutely. I think that you're right. And I, I mean, take a look at the cluster bylaw. We certainly, you know, are not going to forget the carburetor land when we try and come up with this, this master condominium zoning, but there are options other than AA.
I do have a draft copy of a map of the town that the, the GIS specialist in the town has been helping the master plan committee with, and we're trying to show all of the land uses of Blue Hills, Curry College, Milton Academy, Milton Cemetery, the various parks and playgrounds, land that's not available for, for developments, or presumably not available for development. The Coney Park could theoretically be developed, but we're just saying that those are not. And as you, and we also show all the houses in the town on it. And what you find out is on the cream-colored land, you see all the open spaces, Milton Muse Property and the Hamilton's Property and Meg Lane. And, you know, you don't find, you don't find an awful lot of land available for development as in, as you said, you asked, Mike, you asked about five acres? I think you asked about five-acre parcels or 30-acre parcels.
Yeah.
There just aren't very many.
Right.
There's, I think, one of 30, and so it's, we haven't started to bring it down by five acres, 10 acres, two acres yet, but it's leading us to conclude that there's less than 10% of the town's 3,000 acres, so that are available. Of course, there are, there are 100 to 150 scattered lots like next to my house, or next to your house, that we're not, we're not identifying separately. Those will probably get developed over time, hopefully gradually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's food for thought. And we, we thank you for the input, and hopefully we can, do you want your map back?
No, no, it's a, it's a draft, there's still a few laws in there that have to be fixed.
This is great, thanks.
For the data.
Yes.
I'd like to address something that's related, it's a little different than a condominium, but I think on the subject of housing, and I think it's important, and I don't know whether it's something that the master plan committee has begun to think about, but I think we need to think about in the context of our zoning. Ned Corcoran again. Substantial swaths of the developed- Substantial swaths of the developed part of this town are substandard. They do not meet today's zoning requirement, particularly the Residence C District. Hundreds of lots are substandard and non-conforming for lots of different reasons. Either the lot size themselves is substantially less than 7,500 square feet. Buildings were built with, limited to no setbacks, and it creates a very, very difficult issue for families who own houses, who would like to re, re-expand or remodel to meet needs of a growing family. A lot of families who move in, maybe with two young children, and the, the small kitchen and the, and the one-and-a-half bathrooms probably worked for about the first 10 years that they were in the house. But all of a sudden, those two kids are in high school, maybe there's a third, and there's inadequate space in that house. Now, it's very difficult for that family to sell and move and relocate in Milton, but they would like to be able to remodel, to expand the kitchen, to add bathroom space, maybe add additional bedroom. And often, they run into the need for variance. And variance has become almost neighbor-on-neighbor crime. And he who lives next door controls. So I think in context of the housing question, the Planning Board and Town Meeting really needs to think about a change in approach to how we address nonconformity. And Quincy has a bylaw, and I know we, we had a very brief conversation about this in January.
We actually had a brief conversation and a draft.
And we had a draft that Bob Sheffield and I conspired on to our own economic disadvantage because we do, we do most of this work before the Board of Appeals. But it is, they are very, very difficult cases. And in my mind, most of what's being requested is, is reasonable. And an investment in that house is going to, by its own nature, increase the value of everything that's around it. Now, I live next to one of the most architecturally significant, most valuable, non-conforming structures in town. It's the old Morton, Captain Morton Estate. It's a full three-story federal building on a lot that's, that's conforming because it's about 10,000 square feet. It's Residence C. You couldn't build that house today. You couldn't build the house, two houses that are immediately next to it, up Morton Road. You couldn't build the three houses that are across the street from it today. They're all beautiful, magnificent homes. That federal was redeveloped or rehabbed a couple of years ago. Family bought it, it was donated to Milton Academy. Family bought it from Milton Academy for about $975,000. They put $2 million into it. They won't get that back when they sell it. But my value for every dollar that went in, our neighborhood benefited from that. And I just think that we need to, we really need to think about what it means for these families who want to stay in Milton. They're in a neighborhood, their kids are, they're in a neighborhood where their kids have friends, and they don't want to be forced to move somewhere else because they need a bigger house. So how do we do that? So I think that's a sensitive and a, there's a sensitivity to how that conversation needs to happen. But I do think we need, the town needs to think about an adjustment to the bylaws. You take it out of the variance process to some degree.
Why don't you provide your draft to the Master Plan Committee?
I will do that. But, so, that's one, and there's some other issues as well that I, that I've gotten to provide.
And if you see fit to, you know, try to, like anything else, we need time before these things get, get filed for the warrant. It's just very helpful for the Planning Board to get stuff with enough time to be able to review it.
That's why I wanted to raise it this evening, and I'll get something so that there is adequate time, because there wasn't adequate time.
I, I understand that. And thanks.
Thank you.
Who else wants to be heard on condominium? We're going to continue this discussion next week.
Yes.
This is, this has given us a start.
Yeah, the and her team will be leading us through the discussion.
They will indeed. We will, the Planning Board will be listening with their, with intensity. So it is 10 of 9, and I think that we could conclude the meeting unless someone else has something to say, and feel that it should be said now. All right.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Sher.
One sec. Do we need to address that issue with...
Yeah, we have to.
Well, that, we ought, do we need to address the issue with...
Oh, we have to sign that.
With Abbey Park?
The mural?
The mural.
It's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. Discussion item is...
I, I had a question when I seen that. Why do you say there's not an advertising when it says Abbey Park?
It already says Abbey Park.
It's on the wall.
It's already on the wall.
It's sprucing up the advertising.
Anything around it.
I mean, I...
And it's not on the agenda.
All right. We will discuss it. Maybe next week.
Put it on the next week's agenda?
Yeah.
Maybe not next week, though, depending on our condominium discussion. Or we could, we could actually show up at 6:45 and do the, the Abbey Park mural if there is, if there is, why don't we do that? Move our meeting back to 6:45, and well, if there's any business to fit in there, we will do so. All right. Now, we're going to sign that. I don't think we have to sign it in our, in open meeting. I think that we can sign it. I think we can, in other words, I think we can adjourn.
Okay. So we can adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I guess we're offside.